Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. If you'd stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Alex, can you do roll call for us, please?
Here.
Here.
Here?
Here.
Here. We do have a quorum. Next, we have a change to the meeting agenda, so we'll need to get an approval for the agenda without the budget update with Beth.
Make a motion to amend the meeting agenda for tonight to remove new business, Topic A. Counsel to hear budget update from Beth Marsh at Bookkeeping Plus.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Then we need to get approval of the meeting minutes for June 17th and July 1st.
Do we need two separate?
I don't think so. I think we can do them both.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 17th and July 1st.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. New minutes or new business. We have a special request from Cindy Tindall of Burgess Restaurant Group for Saturday, July 20th. Anybody here? Yep, there she is.
Hi. So we, I'm Spencer Wood from Fox Garden, Burgess Restaurant Groups. We are just wanting to do our anniversary party again. We do this every year, July, August-ish. This year, the charity we've chosen is Cammy's Cause. We just need use of the public side of the back parking lot. We've done this another time, so pretty much similar live music. We will have tents, we'll have concessions. We've got an outdoor bar that we already have the permit for max size for. No picnic tables or street signs or anything are needed from the town, just permission to use the space. And we obviously will make sure Cortona's and the boutique right there have their employees made aware. So no one's, you know, in the parking spots or anything like that.
You guys don't need to close down Noel, do you? You don't ever close it down, do you?
Anybody have any questions?
How late's the band gonna play?
Till they're not supposed to anymore.
I don't remember what time. If it's 10 or 11, whichever time it is.
I think it's 11, yeah.
It's 11. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request for Ox Garden's ninth anniversary celebration, Saturday, July 20th, 2024.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good event. Next up, we have another special event request from Mary Beth Haas of Be Local for the Visit the Ville program. Yes.
People online can hear you.
All right, you'll have to forgive me. I'm a little nervous. I am Mary Beth Haas, and my husband and I own Be Local. And it goes out to the entire North Indy suburbs, including new movers. And we are working on a program with Fortville called Visit the Ville. My husband has a few handouts there. I meant for him to pass them out to you guys, but I wasn't clear about that. Sorry, so. Um, so what is Be Local? First and foremost, Be Local, again, it's a new movers magazine that goes out, obviously, to people who are new to the area, right? So those people who need to know everything new. Locals tips, hidden gems, the best ofs. A lot of our business partners are here in support of it. And there is a two-page spread in the publication of the downtown area in Fortville. Why? So why are we doing this? We, you know, obviously are marketing and advertising people. That's, that's, that's what we do. Did we ever think we would be? No. I was a teacher and he was in logistics, but what I find is that we're really good at connecting people to local businesses, and that's what we're trying to do for Fortville. We're trying to get more exposure to the downtown area and all of our business partners so far. So on the map, we've included a logo pullout, and then we've also included a key on the new map. There are several other components that we'd like to include, and that would be a visit from the Traveling Foodie Guide, who has over 100,000 followers on Instagram and a huge, huge network that will bring a lot of exposure to the area. Also, we'd like to have Indy Now come and do a pre-recorded segment in downtown Fortville. It'll be a collaboration between Be Local, hopefully Fortville Action, and then our business partners. And lastly, we would like to do a Be Local family concert in front of AJ's and focus a family-free community concert with Annie's Jam. We could have anywhere between 200 and 1,500 people. It is a free event and it's very hard to gauge. So some of the things that we've heard in talking to local businesses is, one, they love it. Yes, we're in. Two, we don't necessarily have the money. Or three, eh, we don't need to advertise, which is something we hear often. So it's, it's, it's nothing new. However, we do know that the construction has impacted the business downtown, and we just, we just want to help. So that is the plan. The dates are included on the handout. And I think what we need from the town of Fortville is to close off Main Street because we really want to focus on the Main Street Avenue and the businesses that are on it. And we will have a band. We will have, hopefully, as many businesses participate as possible because it doesn't look good to have eight or 10 businesses on a map when you know there's 25 or 30. We want to have as much participation as possible, and we're looking at the city to help us out a little bit with that. Did I cover everything? Okay.
So why did you pick a Thursday?
Basically, because we have done a lot of research in our concerts before, and we find that we get a better audience when we do a weeknight, when people aren't as busy and sort of like a happy hourish where people can bring their families, they can have food, they can have drinks, they can have fun, and then they can take their kids home and go to bed.
Sure.
And we've really focused on the family-friendly in that we bring a princess. We do balloon twisting, we do face painting. We do a lot of fun stuff that draws, you know, a great crowd.
So you've done this in other communities?
We do it at Daniel's Vineyard. We've been doing it there for four years. This year, we reached out and are doing it in Zionsville, Carmel. We've done it in Noblesville at Beer Brewery. Typically, we do it at business locations, but in this case, we want to highlight the whole downtown area.
Chief, what would the logistics be of a concert like right there in front of AJ's? You know, with people standing, you know, all throughout?
And you want to close the entire Main Street down?
That's a good question. There's, there's, I mean, I think some logistics that we can definitely talk through. I don't think we have to close the entire Main Street down. We just want to make sure that the entire Main Street is included.
So I would like to see it go up to Stat Street because that, right now, that's one of our main east-west.
Yes, that would make sense.
And we could stop it there.
Yeah.
Normally, when we have an event on Main Street, you've got to keep somebody near the railroad tracks because everybody's crossing and trains are still coming.
Yes.
We always recommend calling CSX, saying we're having an event. If you could have your train slow down to 30, which that is something that they can abide by, they don't abide by. They're a federal entity, so we don't really have much say, but that's the recommendation. And then have someone close by the tracks that way. When children are present, no one darts out there and we can do that.
Yes. We'll also have an extra event, insurance policy. There's Scott at Indiana Farm Bureau. That's who our commercial policy is through, so we'll do that as well.
Those are just my recommendations.
Thank you.
Do we need restrooms or anything set out? Okay.
Is that right? One portable and one ADA?
That, that I'm not sure of yet. That, that is a great question, and I can certainly find out. Those are the sort of things that we're looking, because we haven't done a city or a town event before. It's usually at a business location that I would be looking, you know, for some guidance on from you guys.
Yeah, usually, when we shut down a street, you have to provide restrooms.
Okay. I guess my next question would be, would the, would the city or the town be willing to contribute to any of these things? That is one, that is one piece of feedback I have gotten from, from our advertising partners or partners who aren't necessarily interested. They say, you know what? We would love to see the city step up and help us with this. I'm, I'm the messenger here.
Well, let me ask you this. So the people that you've listed here on, are you only listing or supporting the people that are going to advertise with you? Is that what happens?
No, I don't, I don't think that's it at all. They're the ones who are advertising with us, but we want the entire community to be involved. I think that we need to be able to spread the word and, and help with communication from Fortville Action and from the town of Fortville that this is a community event. So any, any way that you can help with that would be greatly appreciated. I mean, we're happy to put, you know, we know how to do events. We're happy to put, you know, sponsored by the town of Fortville, you know, Fortville Action, local businesses, and Be Local. It's a collaborative effort. You know, I'm not going to get a ton of exposure going on Indy Now and wearing my Be Local t-shirt. It'll be good, but the exposure's for Fortville.
Sure. Not in our budget, but.
Well, I think it'd be nice, you know, if we had a specific ask.
Sure.
And just, you know, can the town help? I'm sure there'll, I'm sure there'll be some help, but.
That would be great.
Maybe some suggestions you could bring back?
Well, I know right off the bat, 3,500 is what I have to pay out of pocket for Indy Now to come out and for also the Traveling Foodie Guide. So 1,500 for him, 20,000 for Indy Now, and that's to support the downtown area and six small businesses. If we want to do more than that, it's $1,000 for more, you know, per three businesses. We also, you know, to have a concert, which we typically cover all of those expenses, is about $1,500 out of pocket. But we know what it does for a community, and we know it does, what it does for our business partners. It brings a ton of exposure. And at the end of the day, word of mouth is what you want and what you need, and that's what it does.
So how many businesses you said you got for 35?
For 3,500? So that would cover three restaurants, and right now, we have Moon Drops and we have AJ's. We'd love to include some more, you know, at least three or four more restaurants. And I think, you know, that's what's going to draw people on the map. When they see that they can come and go to several different restaurants, and they can visit several different boutiques, and there's something they can do for an entire day, that that's what's going to draw them to Fortville. Right now, we have two. And for 2,000 for Indy Now, again, which is extremely reasonable, usually it's double that. That's for six businesses to do very, very short segments, and that's with Ryan coming out.
So these businesses here will be paying you for advertising, is what I'm asking?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to.
Oh, sure.
You know, if, if we contribute, it needs to be for everybody.
I agree.
I don't, I don't want to just take a handful of businesses and say, you're the only ones that we can support.
I agree.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why I'm asking you all these questions.
Sue, please. I, I know it can be confusing. And the thing with Be Local too is that we do print, we do digital, we do social media, we do networking. I've offered some of the other restaurants here, hey, we'll bring networking to Fortville. You know, you have the space for it. And, you know, we just haven't been able to make headway with some of them. So I guess, you know, that's, that's a whole nother level. I told them, let me go and present on your behalf. So if anybody's upset, they can be upset with me and not, you know, not the businesses in Fortville.
Well, no, I'd like our businesses to come here and tell us what they want, but yeah, I mean, we have to. I, I don't feel right just approving for a certain amount of businesses because they're the only ones that advertise for you. If we're going to do this, I'd rather it be for everybody and not just a few.
I would agree.
I mean, that's not, I mean, because it is, it is affecting everybody, not just a few.
Right.
And there's probably a lot of them that can't afford to advertise at this time, so.
Right, so I think that's, that brings up a great conversation, and what can we do for the ones who maybe can't afford it? You know, what can we contribute to at least get their logo on the map? And that way, they, you know, get exposure when Indy Now is here and when the Traveling Foodie Guide is here. What are some other ways we can do that? Because I want to include them on the map.
Yeah.
I just need them to call me back.
And, and it sounded like, it sounded like there aren't that many businesses signed up yet.
Right.
Right? And so it seems like there's a critical mass kind of issue that if they're not.
It's expensive to advertise. I get it. I know how expensive it is, but, yeah.
This is, I'm Rich Case from Fortville Action. She mentioned Fortville Action a couple of times as far as our potential involvement in it. I wanted to kind of fill you in on some of the conversations we had and some of the concerns you brought up and, and things that we're doing to potentially address these is, is I know, and everyone here knows as much as anyone, that Fortville business owners, you walk into a shop on Fortville, a lot of times, you're going to see the owner, and they're working 60, 70, 80-hour weeks. There's not a lot of budget for advertising, and it, and it's hard. So we had thrown around the idea that Fortville Action could potentially sponsor a number of small businesses under a certain revenue cap to be included on this map, because it doesn't feel like it would be a map of Fortville if we didn't have Jennifer's Flowers on there. You know, it doesn't feel like it would be a map of Fortville if we didn't have Mazzy's on there. You know, the places that have been around that make Fortville what it is should be included on the map, even if they don't have it in their budget to cover it right now. On the counter side of that, Be Local has expenses associated with this.
Sure.
So we thought to ourselves, like, maybe we can put out a, a sponsorship where we can cover the costs of inclusion. There's hand-drawn logos that go into this. The map itself costs money, the print, the publication, all that. There's costs associated with it. But we had talked a little bit about Fortville Action being that mechanism that steps up and says, hey, we want to make sure that this map is representative, that our advertising campaign is representative, and that it's not just for the businesses that have the big revenue, but it tells a story and, you know, draws people into all of the shops and all of the places around Fortville. So it would be specifically targeted at kind of the places that maybe wouldn't have it in the budget under a certain revenue cap, and then it wouldn't include all of the features. It would just be like map access without any of the advertising, you know, additional stuff added to it. So if we could do something like that, I think a good ask would maybe be to say, hey, if we come up with half to sponsor some of these businesses, the town would come up with half to, you know, to match what we're willing to put in. It might be a good, a good way to get this project done. Just an idea there, so.
Yeah, we, we need, we need numbers. We need specifics because, you know, we have to account for every dime we spend, so. Yeah.
I mean, I'd say, I'd say a minimum of 2,500 each, 2,500 for the town, 2,500 for Fortville Action. I think that would help a lot. And that could include, you know, some sponsored ads on Facebook. That could include more video. I just met with some local influencers today who want to come out and do, you know, a walk down Main Street. So it's just really all about exposure, and I think 2,500 apiece would be a really, really good, good start, and it would allow us to do even more.
Would that include then all the businesses?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, I, like I said, the last thing I want to do is exclude anyone. That's, that's been.
Yeah.
My main thing. I just can't get people to call back or listen sometimes.
I think we talked about this two meetings ago, about putting a marketing dollar budget together. And we're getting ready to do, what, a budget meeting, August 1st? How much is, is there anything lauded in there for, for marketing, where we're going to be marketing the town?
I'd have to see what's in there, yeah. I, I was out last week, so I didn't make the budget meeting.
We can look into, yeah, I mean.
My personal opinion, $2,500 is pretty reasonable to advertise.
We have a budgeted amount of money for marketing the town. That's what I'm looking for. So we don't have, we have a lot of questions, and we need to put some marketing to.
And we can look at that for next year, Fritz. I mean, that's fine. That's what we need to do. We need to sit down and come up with a number that works, and I, I agree with you. I mean, there needs to be something.
What's their budget? What percentage of their rope are they putting towards a marketing? When you have a business, you put a certain amount of money, a 5, 10% into marketing. So what is our budget? And how can we get that so we, we, we can budget all this stuff for the year to get this stuff done and then even work all this in?
I think for, for years though, I mean, we've wanted to know exactly what the money's going to, right? We need details, details of exactly what's included, you know, if you can present that at the next, like at the next meeting, and then we'd be happy to look at that and for approval.
Sure. Yep, and, and like I included it on, did they all get handouts? It's, it's, it's in there as far as, you know, my.
Clearly what the 2,500 would go to, you know, and what would we give, you know, like what, what that entails exactly. You know, we need to know exactly what the dollars go to, I think, right?
Yeah.
Not a number that's arbitrary.
Yeah, and just what, what are all the businesses? Where's the list? And I had a couple of questions, maybe to walk back over the fundamentals of this plan, maybe for those in the audience who might be in the same frame of mind as myself. So, so you make a magazine and you do live events, and you've done them mostly at Daniel's Vineyard and one other place, but these are like establishments? And they have focused on Indianapolis or, okay, but they've been at specific venues, and then you wanted to kind of take that concept on the road, but Fortville is the first town that you've, you've looked at for that, or you've.
No, so we've done, we've done events at Daniel's Vineyard for the past four years. This year, because we now have two Be Local publications, our events are, have been in Carmel so far, Noblesville. So at Carmel, it was at the Carmel Gazebo Concert Series. In Noblesville, it was at Beer Brewery. We're doing Zionsville, Mulberry Fields. We're also working with their Parks and Rec Department. We're working, yeah, we, we work with quite a few different businesses and towns and parks and recs specifically because that's typically where like the event piece happens.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay.
It's a lot. I understand.
So then, so you, you've done these different events, so you, you have some experience with, you know, showing up at towns and doing these events. And then the plan for Fortville would be a music concert, like a family-friendly music concert in front of the wine, the wine bar, the wine garage. I did have one side question related to Tanya's question about a Thursday because our farmer's market is on Thursday. So would that compete with that? Is, is Thursday the best day of weekdays, you know? That's just like one side, just a side question, maybe. But as far as, as far as the, the plan goes, you have to pay a fee to, to bring, to make it happen. The businesses that participate pay you a fee. We just had some discussion about some businesses maybe can't afford it or didn't, didn't answer. We want to make sure that any money we put in, I don't know, maybe I'm just repeating everything back. Maybe this is boring, but I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
Because the, the end result is that we would have some kind of a street fair, like what it would look like, what it would look like is a street fair in the evening with a concert and tents. And what I'm trying to understand is, how is this different then or similar to like the, like the Treats on Main or the, you know, any of these outdoor festivals we already have in town, although those are on holidays, you know, like Treats on Main is the Halloween thing?
Yeah.
But I've never, I don't know, I've never really thought about who pays for that or how does that come up? Treats on Main, each vendor pays a little fee to the group that organizes it, and just all this discussion about all these amounts of money going around. I just wanted to make sure I understood what that's about. So you put in money upfront and businesses have to put in money, and the discussion is maybe we're cost-sharing with Fortville Action on helping make sure all the businesses can be included. And then, and then the end result is that there's going to be tents and a concert?
That is the end result. However, the, the key piece that you're missing here, because I understand there's a lot, is that Indy Now will also be coming, and that'll be televised, and then the Traveling Foodie Guide, who is a huge influencer. He charges easily $1,000 per business just to go do a reel. So he will come out and he will go to the restaurants that are the advertising partners and create a reel. He's doing like, you know, feeding his way through Fortville, like that's the plan at least. And it will get a ton of exposure. But for like Preston at Do Lit, for example, he's a brand-new business, right? Like, we typically don't work with brand-new businesses because we understand that it costs money. It takes time to get going. But for the businesses that are participating so far, like, they know that they have to do something more to get people.
How, well, how many are signed up?
So we have, we have 11 right now.
And then what, what do they get out of it? They get to have a tent, and what else do they get?
Well, they get their logo on the map, so the hand-drawn map. That's a two-page spread in Be Local. They also get an ad, for example, like Rusted Window and Utray. They split an ad, and it looks like this. So they get that. They also get a digital ad that goes out to new movers three months before they even come to the area. They get a sponsor index listing. They get social media. They're invited to our networking, and they're able to come to all of our events. So it's, it's very much a package, and it's way more than just an event.
So the event's on a Wednesday, so it won't compete with.
Oh, oh, I thought.
I'm sorry.
Well, we have them. Typically, we do a weeknight.
Okay.
I was looking at.
Thank you.
Have you talked to our Chamber of Commerce, anyone?
I have emailed pretty much everyone.
Do we still have one?
And I don't get responses. I got responses from Mandy, though. Thank you.
I'm just thinking, our chamber that doesn't really, is not active in our community, but they might have some money in their bank. They don't?
No.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
I don't know. Would you like to hear from any of the, any of the advertising partners or any of the businesses that are participating?
I don't think this is a bad idea at all.
Oh, I don't either.
One thing that we love about Fortville is that we, we used to have events that we could not shut down Main Street, but we'd have girls' night outs and, and larger gatherings kind of spontaneously. And so I don't think it's a bad idea. I think what we're asking is for more specifics because we can't just give you a check without justifying what it's paying for. So if you have a budget with line items and things like that, that can help us support you more. And when we talk about supporting all of the businesses, that's just unrealistic. I mean, there are businesses that, and we don't know all the businesses. Do you guys know all the, I mean, I'm on Main Street. I don't know all the businesses. And like Mary Beth says, they won't respond or don't talk back, you know, or whatever.
Yeah, I got a lot of that.
So that's a real unrealistic expectation put on them.
Maybe some don't even want to be too.
Right, but how do you, how do you, how do you reach those people and ask? So, and then is it just Main Street? Because businesses are, Denver's is over.
I don't, I don't think it has to be just Main Street, and I think we can do anything we want to with the map. It's hand-drawn. I, I tried to get as much input as I could from the people who were willing to participate and give advice. And the same thing for the By the Town section. We have a whole section on Fortville that explains the history, you know, what the population is, the important phone numbers, everything like that. But even getting this information is tough. So, you know, it's just, it's really just, what we're trying to do is connect people and connect businesses and bring people to Fortville. So I can certainly get you a line item budget. We are just under a time crunch because I know that, you know, these businesses, they need people. They need people.
So when, when do you need to go to print with your stuff?
I'm sorry, what was that?
When do you need to go to print with what you're going to put out?
It's already in print. Yeah, the map is in here because when I had people.
This, this map here is already in here?
It's in, it's in the publication, absolutely. It's in the publication because I had people who committed, and I wasn't going to hold off for six months in helping to get them exposure. So the way that we'll advertise the event will be through mass marketing, social media, sponsored ads. You know, I would ask the city of Fortville to absolutely get it out as well. The more people who get the event out, the more people will show up. But then Indy Now, who's coming in July, they'll also be promoting it. So that's, that's why we're under the time crunch. So that's, that's why we're under the time crunch. Um.
Is, is the, the closure of Main Street for all three dates or just the one date?
Just the one date.
And you, you, you just need twenty-five hundred dollars?
Really? I mean, I, I don't really have a problem with.
What was the total?
I think, I think if, if the town did twenty-five hundred and Fortville Action is able to come up with twenty-five hundred, that would, that would a million. Percent support the printing. It would a million percent support what we try to do in terms of sponsored ads and getting the word out, paying for Eventbrite. You know, these are all costs that are associated.
Should we spend this year in, in marketing at all? Does anybody know? Or would that be a Missy or Bess? I don't think twenty-five hundred dollars is. Asking them less for marketing.
But is it irresponsible to give twenty-five hundred dollars not knowing what it's going to?
Yeah.
I mean, officially knowing what it's going to.
The amount's okay.
I mean, I don't know what else. I want me to bring in my costs associated with the publication? Or do you just want me to tell you, like, write down two thousand dollars, Indy Now, fifteen hundred, the Traveling Foodie Guide, five hundred for the band, all that stuff?
We're kind of coming in at the end here. It looks like things are already well on its way and we're just now finding out about it.
It's been going on and I tried to reach out to the city as well or to the town as well. I've tried to reach out to the town, the chamber, a lot of people. I mean, how many doors have I knocked on? How many businesses have I been kicked out of? A lot. A lot.
Yeah, I don't know. That's, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with the, the money. I just. If we had time to, it probably wouldn't be such a big deal and we just give it to them. We know what's going on, but I didn't know what was going on.
And here's, and here's where um, the issue lied. I didn't want to come up with a date. Until I got everybody's input, but getting everybody together is actually really challenging, you know, and when you start working with a town and a lot of business owners. So. Rich and I spoke and he said, pick a date. And so Andy emailed me back and said, do you have a date? And I said, yes, we do. Let's do this. And so the band is there, Marcus, the Traveling Foodie Guide is booked, the videographer's there, everybody's there. Um, you know, I just had to come in front of you guys and I'm not trying to leave you out. I tried to get information.
So basically we could get an invoice and go off of that, couldn't we?
Yeah, I think. As long as you guys approve the funds with, you know, the stipulation that it goes for something that benefits. You know, whether it be for the. Foodie guy or whatever you want it to be, but anything you do to promote the town pretty much promotes all businesses.
Yeah, yeah.
It just depends on how much each one of them want to get involved.
At, at the same time though, I, I admit, I think it's a little bit strange that some businesses would pay what sounds like kind of a high fee and then other businesses get subsidized. That just strikes me as a little bit weird. It, it doesn't sound like a high dollar value.
I agree. That's why I was asking for details, because I agree.
For you right now and hand, and I can do that. I know what, I know what all the costs are. Aside from my printing costs, to keep going.
What she's saying is like the people that have already committed a high dollar, now how is it fair that now we then subsidize the?
The rest of them. I would agree with that. I wouldn't want to be one of the eleven businesses that already paid a fee to find some.
Yeah, sure. Great.
I think for them, just from what I've heard. Any traction is good traction to the downtown area, but let's, let's hear from them.
I understand that. Yeah, nobody's arguing that.
It's like the, it's like the mall effect. People go to, to Sears and JCPenney's. They're the anchor stores. They pay the most. But the benefit for the smaller uh, stores that they stop in in between, that's where it pays off.
But the question is, is it up to the town to subsidize that? That's the question.
That's why I, I was hoping that we would have, this would have gone. Earlier, because I want to make sure that we get a, a more money in a budget for, for marketing our town. As a destination for people to come from Fishers. We should market.
Disagree with that.
To Fishers and Noblesville and Greenfield and Pendleton. And really. For the size of our town and what's going on, we need more, more marketing, more.
We're all agreeing to that.
So your thing is, you're making comments about timing. Timing regardless of funding.
We need to find like twenty grand or more for uh, in the budget for next year for marketing, at least twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Talking about this one specific event.
Right.
Um, being a business um, and subsidizing others. My name is Nikki Tredup. My husband Jason and I, we on the retro sync. We're brand new on Main Street. We jumped on B local. We're, we're paying those fees that you're speaking of to advertise. I don't want to speak on all of the eleven businesses that have partnered with B local, but as far as this business is concerned, we are one hundred percent okay with subsidizing the other businesses. Because what helps those businesses also helps our business. We have the budget to market and to advertise. Other businesses may not. But if we draw business, draw attention to the businesses that don't have the funding for that, we're going to be noticed as well. So as far as that is concerned, and I think that. That is a pretty reasonable thing to think about, that subsidizing others that don't have the funding there. I want people to come into our business. We are, we started from scratch. We started from nothing and came to Fortville because we love Fortville. I used to work a taxman. Um, and we intend on staying in Fortville, so we want those businesses to be seen and heard. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
My dad's gone, sorry.
Yeah, it's not working.
I, I concur with her. We, we um, the, the same way everyone knows that we're not getting rich at the wine garage by any means. We are betting on the come when the road opens and different things happen and, and. Um, Fortville, the destination, my wife and I were counting, I think there were seven restaurants. Plus uh, the ice cream place.
I don't, I don't fit in anyway.
Right through there. Yeah. And then throw, sure you do. And then, and then throw Denver's in. Uh, I'd be willing to even make a, um, a, a donation to the fund that we're talking about. Uh, in, in, in lieu of what we're doing here at B local. Uh, competition breeds good business. It always does. And the more restaurants, I mean, look at. I know it's a crap hole now, but you look at Broad Ripple, but, but look at Mass Ave and in other places. Um. You think, how many restaurants can you put in one area? Well, if the town is inviting and, and um, it's, it's run well, there's no end to it, honestly. Um. Fortville, for the most part, is a destination. Uh, uh, Main Street's a destination place and that's exactly what they're wanting to do. And that's why I jumped on um. Uh, early on in it. And as far as the farmer's market's concerned, I, I can almost promise you, I could text him from here or call him, that the Priest family in particular would um. Welcome it. That.
It's on a different day. It's on a different day. We figured out.
Will they change that one?
Well, no, the farmer's market's a Thursday, but this is a Wednesday.
That was my mistake.
We were mistaken. We were mistaken earlier. Yeah.
Yes, lost.
But let me, can I ask another question? Wouldn't it be easier to go to the RDC? Most of these businesses donate into the uh, TIFT area, right? Well, well, the TIFT, what can they uh, pay into marketing, have a marketing budget? Because it's the business owners that make the tip. The money, I mean.
Tip dollars go towards infrastructure projects, so that's, we can't use it for.
No marketing at all. Okay, so then we need to. Okay. So then we, we probably just need to come up with a town budget because we're making money.
So, so my only other concern is, um, as we all know, some of us that have been here for a while. There are certain um, establishments that don't like the street being closed down, especially around their busier times. Um, I'm looking beyond you and. What do you think Jake's gonna say? Or Martin Peters is gonna say? Yeah, and Martin.
I, I'm, I'm struggling with why it's necessary to close the whole street anyway. Because a, a lot of people park at the bank parking lot and you still have, if a lot of people are coming, you want to have.
There's gonna be people standing all through the street.
But you can go Noel, Noel.
It would be great if we could use that, that whole area as well.
Oh, you're gonna have to go about that organics.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I don't think we have to close the whole street. I also think that um, if the town backs it, I think that. B local will get more backing. That's straight up what I've heard from business owners. Too specifically, um.
That part of the street's closed down anyway. They're not gonna be open till November. With the sidewalks.
But the.
Is that? November?
Positivity, please. Um. It can be. You just never know.
See, isn't that strange? That's so strange. You'd think it would be.
Shop owners.
Yeah. You have two hours.
Yeah, what are the?
So typically our concerts are from five thirty to seven thirty. I mean, because again, family friendly, the whole idea is to get the kids there because when the kids come, then the parents come, the parents make the buying decisions, the parents will come back and spend money.
So the shop owners that wouldn't get visibility at their actual location. Are you gonna move down and put a booth up? I'm, you're there. PJs, yeah. Yeah, because I'm just thinking that stinks when you can't shut down the whole road because then they, you don't see your shop or whatever. Um.
But, but what, I mean, we can take it to so many different levels. We can have punch cards that people have to go around to different businesses and get punch cards. So that way they go in and see it. There can be a. Come back and see us another day and get ten percent off. There can be so many things that we can do if we all work together.
So to be clear, so to be clear, um, I, I think the event's great. I'm all for the event and the approval of the event. Um, the money, I would feel a lot more comfortable if it was going to the. Specifically the entire event versus. Funding the businesses that can't. Pay for the advertising. I don't know if, if you understand what I'm saying there, but I would love to fund the event. Like, you know, partially fund the total event.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah. If I understand what I'm saying there now, but specifically the.
If it's all the businesses, then I'd want to see a spreadsheet of which businesses. And then it becomes like today.
Great with that.
Be local.
Yeah, yeah.
Directly to the Traveling Foodie Guide.
Yes. We're okay with that.
Or Indy Now.
That everybody is included in.
I mean, how impactful would it be? If the town council and the business owners and everyone's on Main Street when Indy Now comes out and everybody has matching Fortville t-shirts on, how impactful is that?
Yeah.
I know someone. I know someone.
Well, I can tell you from the police department standpoint that I'll, I'm all for the event. I like bringing people into town. Um, we've just been really busy, but I'll commit two officers plus me that evening just to mount a cruise around and hang out on Main Street with everybody and do that. We can't give any money because we're cops and we're always broke, so.
Hey, I get it. I'm a business owner.
Get a couple guys out and we'll just come walk around and hang out with everybody. Uh huh.
Maybe, maybe you could even um, provide the porta potties or something like that towards the event. Um, that could be in a fee, you know, if you need something to write the check to.
Yeah, I think you can just do it as.
Okay.
Yeah, general.
My thing is just that the more businesses we have on the maps, the more people are gonna want to visit. So.
Sure.
I guess what I'm asking of you is if you can help spread the word, that's, that's really gonna be the most impactful. The money will absolutely help. But you spreading the word and putting, and putting the town behind it.
Sure, we can put it on the Facebook page, right? Yeah.
Pay the money, all the businesses fall in the, no? Or is that not?
Is that?
That's, I think that's up to you guys. I think what Libby said was that there are certain businesses that um.
You're not gonna know exist.
Right.
I mean, you're gonna think you got everybody and then you don't and then.
Right, and I don't really want to be responsible for that.
I would say at least the people that have a storefront on Main Street and Broadway need to be on the list.
No, you could break it down and just say Fortville has so much more to offer and you could break down categories or something.
Yes.
I'm not an advertiser, so I don't know what's best.
If you don't put me on your flyer, I'm all right with that. I'm still gonna be, have business.
I emailed you.
I guess.
You emailed, you probably emailed Amanda, not.
Yes, that's right. That's right.
So Joe, what do we need to do for, do we need an invoice? We need a, what do we need?
I come, as long as you approve the dollars, as long as it's like what Ryan had mentioned, um, just for the event.
Yeah.
To go toward uh, be local for the event on Main Street. Um, I think we're getting a lot of good publicity out of it as far as with.
Thank you.
Advertising and the catalog and, you know, rising tides float all ships, so.
Sounds good.
Well, I'll tell you, just personally from a um, business standpoint, I miss the camaraderie that we used to have back in the day. And so anything to bring businesses together and celebrate what we have, it's a great little community. So I appreciate the effort and everybody.
Thank you.
Bringing that to us.
I'm trying really hard.
Yeah, it's hard work.
I was very nervous, so thank you.
I do want to say too, when you were talking about the insurance earlier, uh, make sure you get a certificate of insurance with the town of Fortville's in addition.
Okay.
Okay. Town. And Spencer will need the same from our. Our insurance company, they get upset with us if we don't get those.
Absolutely.
So do we need the specifics of the road closure then right now? I mean, is that, do we need to nail that down?
It's, I mean, the concert isn't until September, so we have some time for that. Um, what I'd really like to see though is just, is many businesses rally behind like the Traveling Foodie Guide and Indy Now, because that is going to be like immediate exposure. And we have um, Indy Now coming, like I said, for six small business segments, and I'd love for that to be for eighteen. I mean, it's a thousand dollars per three, so, you know, any help you can be in getting the word out, that would be great.
I recommend just leave it, shut it down at Stat. Because if, if you stop at the tracks, people say, oh, I want to go see what's on the other side of tracks. And then there's no place for anybody to turn around, you know, that, or people get jammed up in the alleys.
Yeah.
At least if you shut it off at Stat, there's a clear east-west. If people are coming south, they can go on and get around.
So Main Street, south of Stat.
Main Street, south of Stat, all the way down to Broadway. And that's already shut off anyway, so, so we just need barricades there on each side, one block off. So nobody turns once we get south of Stat. Yeah.
You want to include Noel from?
Yeah. Yeah.
So that little segment of Noel there up to Mill Street. Go all that area in there.
And we can work through that. That's not, I mean, set barricades out and we're good.
Excellent, thank you. So we'll, we'll create the marketing flyer. We'll do all of that. Oh.
During bank hours.
During bank hours.
Only during bank hours.
Be after the bank hours, so it should be completely open parking and.
Yeah.
Public parking lot will leave open, just blocked off right there on Main. So there'll be those parking spots available, should be.
For Lloyd design. Kind of interferes by with the post office. At a lot of these events. And I know there's rules that happen to keep the post office traffic available. And I love fire trucks more than the most person. Most, more than most people, but they park right in front of our business. And I feel like we don't get the same exposure.
I would just call the fire chief. Um, normally my guys on events like that, we park right up to the barricade, but then I know the fire trucks like to back all the way down and turn their fancy big red lights on because they like those things. So. Yeah, honestly, on an event like that, they probably would just send like a medic unit out if anything. Or they may not even send anybody out just because it's only a couple hours and.
I, I do think though, that having fire trucks, fire engines there is good because kids like to see it.
Oh, they love the environment.
So is, is many people from the town you can bring out, the better, you know?
Well, maybe they could just park on Main Street.
Yeah.
It's gonna be shut down.
In the center of Main.
Absolutely.
Thing cool, you could bring it.
Yes.
If you have anything.
Do you have a Paw Patrol character?
I think I have another question.
Um, well, I, I think. Yes, yes. And I think we get Lloyd designed to do a Visit the Ville t-shirt. I think we get people, you know, moving in that direction. It becomes a really big thing. Where, you know, you're seeing it everywhere and consistent, consistently. And then people will come. We'll get all of that taken care of. Um, we'll send it all to you guys. Um, anything else? Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the event. As long as there's the bathrooms, you know, as long as the, you know, the bathrooms are provided, um, for July eighteenth, I'm sorry, first. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the event for September eighteenth, uh, shutting down the street and then approve the $2,500 in funds to the general event.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have a question, one question. You can stay there. Do, or did you? Did, did you come to Fortville? Did you come here or did our businesses contact you? I just want to know. Yeah, just curious. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for doing it. We appreciate it. Okay. Does does anybody else want to say anything? I'll just let you talk now. If you want to get up here and discuss anything that we just did.
After we voted.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, if somebody can send me a flyer or something, I have every media contact in the city. So.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, we have the, uh, lease agreement between the Parks Department and the Sharks Baseball Organization. That would be Heath.
Does it seem like the AC is off?
Uh, it's not working.
It's not working.
Oh, that's already been
Yeah.
Covered.
Heath is the parks manager for the record. Um, I don't have anything to present. You guys should have all that information and received it a couple of weeks ago. What I am asking is for a discussion and a possible vote on that. I will say, um, if it is voted on and approved, that kind of goes along with what they're trying to do from a business. We've talked about this Main Street. It will be consistently Sunday through Sunday, people being in and out of the park, um, with, you know, families dropping off kids for a two hour lesson or an hour lesson. They're going to need something to do. They're not driving all the way back home. Um, so I think it will definitely help drive traffic as far as the businesses are concerned. Um, obviously we've talked, the, the downside of that is it, it becomes a, a one use facility. Um, but again, I don't know that our current revenue that's being generated from, obviously our shelter house is the, is the kind of big like rental facility that we have, um, outside of some sports teams here and there. You know, this essentially, and, and I think I, I threw it in that email to, to you guys, will essentially quadruple, you know, kind of what our Fortville Community Center revenue is, um, which will then obviously help subsidize some of the things like the toilets and, um, some of the other improvements that we need to make within the park. So at this point in time, you guys have everything. Do you guys have any questions for me as far as the contract is concerned?
I do. How does it affect days like election day and stuff like that? Like when, when the voting in the, the building and.
So the voting, that room does not, everything is locked and secured, so it will not affect.
In the gym?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, because it didn't say that in the contract. So it didn't like specifically say what part of it, I don't, unless I missed it.
The voting, so they have stopped doing, unless they bring it back there, stopped doing early voting in Fortville. Uh, that's out at the admin building. So.
The primary was just in Fortville.
Time, primary, like day of May fourth, or you know, that first Tuesday in May, the first Tuesday in November on election day. It's, it's not anything into the gym. It's room B where the council meetings used to be. Um, that room is still being available for rentals. So that would, it wouldn't affect that in any, any sort of way.
Do the rooms need to be specifically mentioned in the contract or is it?
Yes. I mean, that's not on there. And then also, and Heath and I haven't talked about this, is Indy Sharks a not-for-profit?
They are not.
That's right. So that changes things. And so if the council wants to move through with this, that's fine. There is a process. We need to make a determination that leasing the gym for, this is why this discussion tonight is important, that leasing the gym for this purpose is important. It's the best use of that property. We have to do a request for proposal, which I can have worked with Joe and Heath on that and put it out there, but it's not like with a, a not-for-profit or another government agency where you can more nimbly, um, enter into these types of agreements. But if the council thinks this is a good use and what he's put forward, we can certainly go through and, uh, make sure that we check all the appropriate legal boxes and, and do it correctly. But yes, the attachments of the specific space need to be on here. I, not, we'll shore all this up.
Okay.
But for tonight's purpose, it really is just, do you want us to move forward with pursuing this to, um, you know, lease it to Indy Sharks, or maybe when you put it out to RFP, somebody comes in with a better offer and you know, meets the terms, you don't know, but that's why you, you go through that process.
I'm good with it. I'm excited.
I like, I like the idea also. I just want.
I like it. They're going to play on our fields possibly too. So I'm good.
Yeah. I mean, our outdoor facilities are already booked through next year.
And I agree with you on the, I mean, it is like, there's going to be people dropping people off. They're not going to sit there to practice for a couple of hours or an hour or whatever. They're going to go out and about and I think.
They're going to be local and they're going to go to all our businesses.
So yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. Do we need a motion to, to do anything or what do we need?
Just to move forward.
That's fine. By consensus tonight and then next meeting, I'll have a resolution for you guys to do. I'll work with Heath and Joe to do the other steps, but yeah. There's an expedited procedure that we can use for this type of gym facility. So.
Okay. I think it's great. My only concern and Heath and I were talking about it is the, um, use in Fortville, we don't have a large facility for events and we, I would love to see that building grow. I know we don't have any money and we're going to give it all away to marketing here next year. So, um, but could we entertain?
Well, and I think.
Growing that building?
I think it should be noted that again, that can be with the revenue generated off of that proposal. You know, whether it's the council earmarking it, hey, we want X, you know, certain percentage of that revenue every year to go into maybe a building improvement fund for, Joe and I have talked about expanding that community center, right? And when was it? 2011, 2012? I think you had gotten maybe some proposals for that. And back then it was two million ish.
I think back then the plan that they put together was $750,000.
Okay.
And I'm sure that's. But that was going to be more of a multi-use type facility for banquets and all that. So that would only be used on occasion after spending that kind of money. What Heath's has got going on right now, what he's got proposed, it's going to have people in there all the time and a guaranteed renter. It's going to bring in funds.
I think it's a great, great way to raise money for the park.
Anybody have anything negative to say about it up here?
No.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Yep.
Yep.
Work on that. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Heath. Okay. There's no old business, so we'll go to departments. Joe?
Yeah, I will make mine quick this evening. Um, as you know, um, I've talked to the council about doing the community crossing grant for the road paving for the Timber Ridge subdivision. Um, been working with the engineers to put the estimate together on that project. It's a 1.2 million to resurface or that's the mill and resurface, do some spot repair, curb repair, some sidewalk repair and all the ADA ramps are, you brought up code. So, um, this will be the last council meeting before I have to submit that application. So I need to have a letter, um, accompanying with that application that just verifies that we have the funds, matching funds, which will be 300,000 on our portion. Uh, I've already talked with the bookkeeper and she's, uh, quite confident that we've got those funds and we can move forward.
It's great.
Other than that.
Needed, that's.
It is. It's rough.
It is rough.
That subdivision, I want to say it was, uh, it started development in 92. And those roads, they've taken a beating over the years. But just, you know, as we are looking at the budget and things going forward, Timber Ridge is a very small portion of our road network and the community sidewalks, ADA ramps and all that, two, or 1.2 million dollars. That's a lot of money. So as we're looking forward to budgeting, we need to also be thinking about, you know, we need to have money put back for these projects as we move forward.
Yeah, they're not going to achieve that.
They're, and the, the more we're growing, every brand new road that comes in, at some point in time, we're going to have to rework them. So make sure we keep earmarking funds back for that. That's all I have this evening, unless you have anything for me.
Okay. Adam's not here. Heath? Come back up.
I'll be brief. Um, I'm going to have more as we get into August or some things that we need to work on fee schedule wise, which I've already mentioned. Um, and some other things as far as stages and bridges and things are concerned. We've got some follow-up that we've got to do with some, some companies. Uh, the only thing I want to touch on is Summer Fest. Um, it was more or less a disaster. Only because of the rain blowing in, obviously it was super hot outside, which kind of kept some of the crowds away until the evening and about time people started showing up is when it let loose and, um, I think the, me and my two guys were cleaning up trash till about three o'clock in the morning. Um, as a whole, I just want to make everybody aware, we're going to, I'm going to get with Natalie. She's already, we've already talked about this. We're going to meet next week and we're going to cut it back a little bit. Um, I think it was just a little bit too much this year from an electrical standpoint, from a vendor standpoint. Um, we were running out of space and I know there were some, some complaints about, you know, some of the vendors trying to park trailers on Main Street and things like that. And so the goal will be to, to leave early wine open for vendor parking like it's been in the past and not utilize that area for vendors. Uh, obviously with the church and more power to them, I'm glad they did it. They built that beautiful playground over there, but it kind of cut off a couple of the vendors that were up there. So we're going to look at kind of keeping the vendors back to where it used to be with strictly, um, school street and veterans core and just kind of right there on stat to hopefully alleviate some of the, some of the issues that we had. Um, I'm going to work with her on some logistics as far as getting vehicles in and vehicles out once the road closes, um, as opposed to kind of the mess that happened. It happens every year. Um, but I'm going to try and figure out a better way of getting people in from a time perspective and getting them out. So we don't have cars coming from pretty different directions and, and things like that. So, um, just be aware that it was noted on some of those things. I do want to, uh, give, you know, thanks to everybody that helped. Um, the fireworks company did the best they could. You know, everything was wet. They had to hand light every firework, um, because their computer was fried. Um, so it just, it was kind of the nature of the beast. We had almost two inches of rain in 45 minutes to an hour. And I mean, it just, it, it's what happened. And unfortunately it popped up over Fortville, so we couldn't see it coming. Um.
I didn't think there was any way it was coming and then.
Yeah.
So, um, please note that there are some things that we, and obviously if there's anything that anybody is, has seen, um, we're open to suggestions and doing some, some different things. Um, but we're going to, scale back's not the right word because people will still show up, but I want to make sure that we've, you know, we're already tied on space. We want to make sure we got enough room for spectators and not overloading with, you know, multiple vendors that may or may not be selling the same things. Um, obviously food's always a big thing, but some of the craft vendors, we're, we're going to, we're going to work on that over the course of the next, um, you know, 12 months at this point in time. Um, and we'll go from there. So.
Um, from a spectator's point of view, um, I, I didn't think it was that horrible. Um, I didn't, I live right there. I didn't hear people complaining. I heard a lot of oohs and ahs as the rain was blowing tents away, but even the people that ran for shelter, um, they weren't complaining. They, they thought it was kind of fun, but do we have any kind of system in place that, I know, I mean, it just popped up out of nowhere, but, um, that could announce like we need to take shelter. That, that's the one thing I saw. Like if we knew it was coming, we could have given people a heads up, but we didn't have a way to give, I mean.
Typically, yes, we've got, you know, the bands and an MC going, they're the problem that you had as soon as that hit.
Yeah.
Well, they didn't, not only did they take off, my understanding is they told me after the fact that they've got over $300,000 worth of damage to their equipment. Um, so I know they're turning it in insurance. I mean, that, that's just typically the, the, the MC, the bands will announce things, particularly if you ask them, you know, lost child, uh, you know, weather moving in, those sorts of things. But it, it came in so quick that there wasn't a way to, and we don't have a PA system or anything over there, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, I, I'm just thinking ahead that I think that we need to have something in place. Um, even at the end of the fireworks, there was, you know, everybody just kind of went, oh, are we, are we done? And so people were standing around and, and then they just kind of walk away like zombies, like, oh, I guess it's over.
Well, and that, that was.
Maybe if there was an announcement that.
That was a response fireworks not doing what should have happened. I mean, essentially you know, when the fireworks are done, it just happened to be that they're trying to hand light everything and it just, it.
Yeah.
It was kind of the, the nature of what happened with it. So, um, I don't suspect, because obviously we typically will have some kind of backup plan in place from a rain perspective, but literally up until that, I mean, it was supposed to be a gorgeous day outside. And so it just kind of is what it is for this year. Uh, we'll move on. We'll make the adjustments that we need to, uh, we'll start prepping for winter fest here in the next, you know, probably month, month and a half and start preparing for that. So.
Yeah. Is there any way we can see, um, the potential signage that's going to be put out there? Just, I felt like this signage was it was, it was, I mean, you could drive by it. It looked like a white sign with some, I mean, it wasn't like, hey, Summer Fest. It looked like Summer Fest.
Yeah, I mean.
Like maybe you should show them.
You should have put it on an orange barrel.
Right. Right.
Maybe in our marketing budget, we could.
Right. Make sure the parks gets marketing budget then too.
Yeah.
I just.
Well, I don't know. Does that fall under, um, the, the coordinator? I, I don't know who, who made the sign. I, I'm sorry if I'm offending you if you made the sign.
I approve the signs because we're trying to fit a lot of information.
I know, I know.
Two by three. I mean, it just.
I'm not being critical.
No, I know. I know.
Some constructive criticism. God knows I hear it all the time, so I'm just sharing the love. Um, but it, it could have been better. And I, along with my whole idea of where we can put marketing a lot, instead of in a little A-frame on, around town. We should have a meeting.
Right. So we, uh, obviously in the past have used that stellar grant, and that's another thing I don't know. I'm sure, because I think Mr. Stair, don't you sit on the Hancock County Tourism Board? Um, and so, I mean, obviously we had used some of the tourism money for the digital marketing and stuff in the past, but that stellar money, the money that we've had has gone. The parks does not have anything from a tourism dollars, but right, but from a parks perspective, there's nothing built into my budget for anything that I pay for marketing is coming out of our, our straight parks budget. So, um, we all know that everybody needs money at this point in time, and particularly for this year with the playgrounds, it's going to be a little tight. So.
Getting update on the new playground equipment?
Uh, I had actually emailed the rep today. She's working on the sign. The two big signs are coming soon. Those should be hopefully in the next week and then they're planning on the playground equipment showing up the last week of August. So we can get that out coming soon and then hopefully it won't take them more than a couple, two, three weeks to get it finished up. And there'll be some use probably into September, October and November until it really starts to get cold. So.
So they're going to pull out the old and put in the new at the same time? Is that what's going to happen?
I don't want to pull out the old until we've got the new stuff here and everybody's ready to go.
Yeah.
So I'm excited. As am I. Any other questions?
Good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Patrick.
Okay. Well, first Summer Fest went well. We didn't have any events, um, on the police side of it. I think there was one lost purse. I don't know if it ended up getting found, but someone did report that. But on our side of it, it went really smooth. Um, before all the rain and everybody showed up, I had a chance just to kind of go through the park and take a look and the parks look great. So thanks to Heath and his team for doing that. Um, I have my quarterly report. It's up on all three boards. I just want to briefly go over. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but there are a few things that I want to highlight. Um, obviously we train, you know, every quarter, every month, at least once a week, I've got a guy at training somewhere doing something. But I am proud to say that we did get one dare officer certified. But I am proud to say that we did get one dare officer certified and they will be teaching dare at Mount Vernon this year. And then helping out the other county schools of Eastern Greenfield and New Powell. So that's a big accomplishment. It's a hard school. And he took it with a grain of salt and did very well. So I'm, I'm proud of him for doing that. And we will have a dare officer at Mount Vernon now. I guess the thing that really surprises me when I, I keep going and I don't know why it surprises me now, but. Um, you look at the calls for service in April, we took fourteen hundred and nineteen calls. Last year we took a thousand and three. Um, I run two guys per shift. So basically two guys were on twenty four hours a day for seven days a week and those guys are handling a lot. Uh, May was twelve hundred and eighty seven, last year was eleven thirty five, and then June was fourteen fourteen, last year was nine hundred and ninety. And then I decided, well, you know what? Let me go back and look. Let's go back four years and see where we're at in the first half, first half calls for service. Twenty twenty one, we took twenty nine hundred and twenty two calls for service for six months. Twenty twenty two was four thousand sixty two, twenty twenty three is five thousand six hundred and forty three. And so far this year, we're at eight thousand eight hundred and thirty. Um, and since then we've gained. Well, since twenty fifteen, we've gained two officers, but our calls for service have tripled. Um, that's something I'm trying to address budget wise. Um, with, we had a budget meeting last Friday. So there's a couple of grants I'm looking at. The cops grant, obviously. They pay for officers for their first two years and then we only eat the cost for twenty five percent, fifty percent. And then seventy five percent up through five years. So I'm looking into that. We've had a problem getting that. We were awarded that back in twenty fourteen to get two new officers. And once we got approved, it got taken to council and council said no. So the, um. Department of Justice and the cops grant hasn't really favored us very much since then, but we've applied since then, but we were denied. I'm also looking at, uh, trying to get a drone in the community. It's great for lost, missing children. It's great for searching for people. Um, we have cornfields around us and this time of year, if somebody goes in the corn, I'm not gonna send an officer out after them. Um, it's just a safety issue, but drones can find them and make it really easy. It's just unsafe for officers to be there with no visibility more than two feet in front of their face. So. We had a good budget meeting last Friday. Um, hope that the budget workshops can, coming up will help us out some. But, uh, I just wanted to highlight that as far as our calls for service. Uh, last quarter we wrote four hundred and forty. It says tickets issued. Most of them were warnings or ordinances. Um, there wasn't a lot of infractions, um, but there was some misdemeanor and felony tickets, which are like felony driving behaviors. Or misdemeanor would be like an OWI. You write the ticket associated with that also. And then accident reports, we only took sixteen this past quarter. We took thirty seven last year, but the reason it was so high last year was construction on Broadway started during that second quarter. And nobody knew where to go, what to do. So everybody just crashed into each other. So this year we're kind of back to our normal, you know, every quarter we're like fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. That's about average for us. So accidents haven't really spiked. Once people figured out the, the traffic lanes and the way to go. So, uh, other than that, I don't really have anything unless you have questions for me.
Keep on keeping on.
Okay.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Missy's not here. Alex, you got anything for us?
I don't unless you have questions for me. If you want to talk about the Dora.
Let's talk about that. We got some business owners here. So let's talk about it. See what they say.
Okay. You want me to?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, yeah. Explain if you, if anybody out there doesn't know what a Dora is.
Not the explorer.
Yeah, not the explorer.
So, uh, a year ago, the state passed a law allowed what's called a designated outdoor refreshment area. Sorry, Mister Stare. Uh, designated outdoor refreshment area. What it is, is it's designed to, so Main Street's the, the easiest example. If the town were, county council were to adopt and create a Dora. Then we'd have a map and you have to have at least one restaurant with an alcohol permit to create a Dora. That's, that would be the designated vendor. You can have more than that, of course. So be great if all the restaurants participate. The advantage is and for Summer Fest or other festivals that we're talking about, if you have a Dora. You could, I could go into Fox Garden. Get a couple of drinks and then go out on the main street and check out the shops, check out what's going on, check out the band. Whereas you can't do that without a Dora. I won't get into all the legal weeds unless you want me to, but you just can't. It also allows you, um. If other businesses, so I walk out of Fox Garden and let's say another business is okay with me coming in and checking out. You know, whatever, whether it's the wiring group stable, whatever it is. Um, you can go into that business with, you don't have to allow people to come in, but you can. Also not allowed without a Dora. So it's a tool that municipalities, the town can use. To add an extra element of not being so nineteen eighty four foot loose about alcohol. And, you know, allowing to kind of loosen up a little bit. The town council has all the authority of creating the Dora. Um, there are some required provisions that the law, you, you have to have signage saying you're entering the Dora or you're leaving the Dora. Um, but really the law allows the town to dictate. Um, whether the Dora is in effect all year long, you know, seven days a week. Or from April first until November first, or just for specific events. You really can tailor the ordinance and the Dora to what fits the town of Fortville. You can also have multiple Doras, uh, up to seven separate ones. So. But each Dora has to have at least one permitted restaurant with an alcohol permit in it to. To satisfy that legal requirement. So that's what you're considering. I sent you some examples of some other. Municipalities that have created Doras that are. Every town's different. Every city's different, but similar size and kind of some of the things that they're thinking about. And, and I've helped a number of communities establish these and have talked to a bunch of communities about it. I say the most common things to really consider is the timing. Like, do you want this to be a year around? Do you want it to be just when it's warm outside? Do you want it to be Thursday through Sunday, seven days a week? Those are the types of things that seem that I've observed have been more community specific. One town or city in the southern part of the state, they just focused on, they're kind of like Fortville. They've got. Four or five really, you know, traditional events that they know they want to have the Dora for. They're, you know, it's all day Saturday or Friday, Saturday. And so in their ordinance, they call out those events. Now you have the flexibility and that's the only time the door is. If the event's not going on, then you're not walking out. I'm not walking out of Fox Garden with, you know, my margarita and go and check wherever. So you have a lot of flexibility, um, and authority as the council to shape. If you want to create a Dora, the boundaries of it and then the terms of when. And times and so forth that, that folks use it. There's also you will, you can put public safety provisions in it. You can put provisions in about trash. You can put provisions about, uh, branded. Cups. You shouldn't have any glass cups going. Um, so lots of different.
Bless you.
Allergy season's terrible. So you've got some examples. I, I also sent kind of a starter template ordinance that. If you wanted to move forward, we can start dragging and dropping and creating the Fortville Dora. I presume we're probably talking Main Street or at least Main Street and maybe some other areas, but. Those are really the two things. One, do you want to do it at all? Two, where, where do we start? And then it's an ordinance. So if you start small and want to grow, that's fine. If you start and you're like, we need to rail, reel this back in a little bit.
That's what I was gonna ask you. Can we change it? Yeah, okay.
Is there any feedback on any communities that are doing it now, like how it's going or?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's still pretty new. Uh, I think there are maybe. Fifteen or twenty that have been approved by the Alcohol Tobacco Commission. That's the other part too, that it does take a while. We've got to go through our process first. And then we upload it to the state's, the ATC site. And then depending on how much stuff Chair Allen has on her desk, it may be a while. So even if we. Passed something in the next couple of meetings, it probably, we'd probably in good shape for Winter Fest if you had it cover that. It takes a while. Communities that I know, uh, town of Kirkland, they have a very, uh, limited. Dora that covers a distillery and a restaurant there and it's worked great. And I've talked to the distillery owner and whatnot. So for. Events that they have. You know, car shows and things like that. It opens up the flexibility that now, even though the, the area in the Dora. Isn't part of the restaurant or the distillery's licensed premises. People can go in and get a drink and then go out and look at all the cars or listen to the band or so it's not, the alcohol's not just limited to the. Floor plan that you file with the Alcohol Tobacco Commission. Um, so, so far. Positive, I know the town of Speedway's ordinance, um, was just approved last week. And so they'll be having some big events for Brickyard and whatnot that's coming up. Positive. I mean, I, I'm sure that there have been issues. It's alcohol, right? And so you're always gonna have something, but, um, I haven't heard anything and I, I haven't, you know, I think that largely it's, it's positive. And, you know, just make sure that we work with Fortville PD and.
Do you have anything?
I know. I think it's a good idea. I mean, just as long as it's enforceable and there's a way so we're not getting like eighteen, nineteen, twenty year olds. Just pouring stuff into a cup and going to hang out on Main Street, you know? So I'm sure there's.
That's why a branded cup would be nice.
And that's a great, that's a great point, Chief. Um, a couple of communities have had, uh, instituted wristbands. That if you, if you walk out, then you also need to have a wristband. Now, I've got kids in college and I was in college. The wristbands can be moved. I get all of that, but.
It can all be changed.
Yeah, there's always a way around something, but if you can limit the number of things, yeah, there are things like that that we can do to. Try to ease the burden on public safety and others to know that, all right. Nice thing is it's Fortville. So I grew up in a small town like Fortville and it was, I was always scared my baseball coach or something that, people know. Little Alex is out there drinking a beer and he shouldn't be.
All my life, people knew.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get, if you want to come up, that's fine, Rich. Yeah. Anybody that wants to chime in their opinion on it, I'd be happy to hear.
Question about just how it works. Um, is this restaurant to restaurant only or is this something that would cover the entire area? So like you could get a drink and then go shopping and then there might be some businesses who are like, yeah, we, we're glad to have drinkers in there. But if I own like antique china shop, I might not want people stumbling around. Kind of. So how do you, how does that work? Is it like an opt in or?
Great question. It's the latter. It's opt in. So what if you have an art gallery or an antique store or clothes or whatever or. If, if you, you can allow people to come in if you're inside the Dora to come into your business. You do not have to. Just like, I mean, if you don't want any drinks or food because of the mess or whatever.
Signage on the front of the building, right? It's, we allow it or we don't allow it, right?
You know, and then just like now, if you're, if you've got a business like that where you don't want people coming in with food and drink and.
Yeah.
Somebody comes in with their, you know, big gulp, you say, hey, you know, would you mind leaving that out?
Yes, I, I've had.
I hear you. It's messy.
I've had a couple of business owners talk about some of the events they used to have that were like a sip and shop or something and they were special events. Uh, something like that would allow, it feels like more collaboration without.
Yeah.
Like formalities associated with it, right? The businesses could collaborate amongst themselves to create those kind of events and. You wouldn't need the, it seems like a good idea. So.
Right. Yeah. It, it, and it is, it's not forcing it down any business owner's throat by any stretch. It is opt in. Both as a restaurant, if you want to be a designated vendor so that people, so that you're participating. Um, and then as a non-alcoholist, a non-licensed alcohol licensed premises, you know, just a, a non. I don't know what I'm saying. Just then, a non-restaurant business, you know, one exception, this question did come up. Is packaged liquor stores. So does, if a packaged liquor store is located in the Dora, does that allow people to walk in with drinks? And the answer to that is no. So all the laws that apply to a dealer permit, which is packaged liquor sale for off premises. So, you know, Dollar General or whatever, you, you can't walk in there with a cocktail. So if there's a law in place that prohibits you going into it.
It's for a specific busy, yeah, business. Yeah.
Similar thing, other states and Indiana, they get, they've got for the event, they ultimately end up doing. Permanently for other reasons.
Yeah.
It's very popular in Michigan, Michigan. They call it something else. I can't think of it right now, but. Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
There are also those, the one in Carmel is, was geared more towards specific like crowd. Um, draws, you know, so like you can go get your beer while your kid's playing on some playground equipment or something and. So you can have fun too.
Yeah, so. Yeah, you need to, you need to demonstrate. So when you renew your alcohol permit now, effective July one. You need to demonstrate that you've got a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars liquor liability insurance. New requirement. So that's the way they addressed it on a state level. Uh, all of my alcohol clients, I would say five hundred thousand is not enough, but you know, that's. I'm not up here for alcohol client.
And tear up your store.
I can't advise you that, but if you're thinking about it, it's a good thing to. It, I mean, anytime as a business owner, if you identify possible risks, a good idea to take a look at, you know, insurance.
Chances are there are a lot of people already drunk just walking around.
Yeah. I mean. Ask your insurance agent to look into it for you. Yeah.
I don't know. Hey, Kevin, Kevin, how do you feel about people bringing alcohol into your establishment that you didn't sell to them?
Okay. Regulated on our own, I told you to do that. You can second as the establishment. That, that's them, but if they're finishing up, they're coming in for, uh, I would have issue.
The next drinks from you then. Yeah, that's.
If you have a do in your hand. If you get other than outside food or better, you know, you gotta be changed to, you can have better. People bring food into your establishment. Don't know what the rule is in Hancock County about bringing alcohol.
I think you can with the door though, right?
Door you can, but.
Without it, you can't.
Even if you didn't have an alcohol permit, it's a place of public entertainment and it's a misdemeanor.
You're not gonna buy a drink because. They, Bob and Mary are there and, and, um, he drinks whiskey and she drinks wine. I actually, that's the case I like. Well, bring Bob down, sell him some food and he can, he can go to Fox Garden and get a.
Drink and bring it in.
Uh, walking in two or three or four, five, whatever, you know, starting. A lot of this stuff was brought up during COVID when they changed all the rules, but again, it can't even, they can't walk out. With margaritas, you know.
Right.
Glass, I would be not, not loud.
Yeah.
The other day I walked somewhere with a damn glass of wine, real like. The other day I walked somewhere with a damn glass of wine. We were like, I can't do this.
Okay. You have to call earmuffs or say stuff like that.
But I think it's not necessarily the purpose. It's just to walk around. Most people are, their goal is to, to buy something and go and, for example, like it goes to another place. But it's just to groove the job and stuff like that. And they don't want them. I would, yeah, if you, you know, if you say, I don't want to, you can't bring it in. They will sit down and mother.
Yeah.
Your, 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 you know, pick it up on your way out.
Sure.
And do you think it'd be hard to manage, like, um, if someone's consumed too much or is that a normal thing that you do all the time? Yeah.
One drink didn't do that. Then you, you, you have to know that.
Yeah.
For training, different things to, to stop that. I look like it was a force. So I just know differently, someone. Doing four times to be like only coming in and, and get off the line. I don't know what they did for the government.
Yeah. So good idea or bad idea? That's good. That's good.
Well, good, so I think probably you guys all came tonight. Help us make some decision.
At the next council meeting, everybody bring their ideas or changes. And we'll put it on the agenda. We'll discuss it, try to narrow it down and then you can come back the following meeting with us. Yes. I think that'd be good.
Year round or, or more?
I'm, I'm thinking like from a month to a month. You know, like January and February, there probably is no need to have it that way. So I would, you know, we got to definitely cover Winter Fest. So I'd say from the, you know, first of spring or that's me personally. Everybody else will have their opinion, but that's what, yeah. The harder it is to. Man, I agree. I agree. Yeah.
And then the area that we can, is, does it matter how big it is?
No, well, we, and we can break it into a two if we want to or whatever. So that's. Okay.
Notice, notice. Sherry's okay with that. She.
Well, I, I know that the, the VFW and. The VFW and the American Legion have all asked me about that too. So, um, yeah.
Well, and Doolittle doesn't sell alcohol and they don't.
Trying to though. I think he's trying. I saw something on Facebook about he's looking at a license or something like that, I thought.
Yeah. 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 So let's, let's, everybody collectively look at your stuff and we'll get, we'll get together at the next meeting and. Try to hone in on something that Alex can write up for us.
Are you looking for a map, like a territory?
Yeah, yeah, probably.
That'll be the, the two key things, math, boundaries, and then, uh, all the time restrictions and things.
Do this, if you put one together, say that's going to encompass Broadway and Main Street and it's going to be year round. What about including say landmark park, certain times of the year? Or can you write it for certain occasions? So like when there's music in the park or the Winter Fest or, oh, there's not going out there, Winter Fest, but.
We could write a separate one.
Where people can walk down.
But you have to have at least one restaurant with a permit tied to it.
That's the con from a rest. So you, so you have to park open year round and it's not like they can't just pour it to all the drink and go and go. And most of them over, you can.
Yeah. Plastic cup, all the same.
I suggest that people in the park are doing it.
I guess I was just thinking more like a. In, in the evening.
You guys are incriminating.
If somebody wants to walk uptown, have dinner and they've got a drink or so and walk back over and listen to music, they've got their drink. Am I mistaken or can't like temporary vendors also? So like if a temporary vendor was in the park during an event.
That's fine.
Right? As always, they've applied for the, the proper door permit or whatever, so.
But if we have the door, then can they do it? Yes, that's what I thought. So.
Pain is you're designate, you're.
Your space is designated, yeah.
So that it opens it up.
So if the park was a part of the Dora, then if a temporary vendor was there for an event, then they could.
That's right.
So the door would just be for, like if we included the park, they would still have to go to Main Street to buy their, their blast, but they could walk back. And be there, but if there's a vendor specifically selling alcohol that isn't a Main Street business. They still need to get a permit to sell alcohol. If the door doesn't cover that.
For a loud. Summer Fest or Winter Fest or pick your fest. And you approve certain vendors or Heath approves certain vendors to be in the park in this area. They could register with the town's approval for a temporary vendor permit for the event. That would then allow them to sell alcohol from their, their spot. But unlike a temporary event permit, which you were talking about where. And we've dealt with some of those in the past where you actually have to have it fenced off or somehow delineated and you can't leave that area with your drink. That goes away. So it makes it easier for more of a, a festival atmosphere. And takes, eliminates some liability for really the vendors when they can't police. People walking out or in, so it softens all of that.
It'd be nice to get like a overhead map emailed to us, Joe. Or something, you know, prior to the next meeting. That way we can draw up our own ideas of where we would want it or whatever. We can do that. Teach you something to put your thoughts on.
Go.
Thanks, Alex.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Any, any other public comment for any other reason? Or thought or no? Okay. Town Council comments? Oh, you got one? Yeah, they, they do come to our meetings. Once the first, the first of the month. So our last meeting, they were here, but they are on schedule. Hopefully we'll be driving on both sides in September if the weather doesn't quit drowning them out, but. Broadway. I, I'm not sure. I don't know if the signals will be done by then. They're just now, we just now got the actual. Uh, fixtures in for the, the signal. So, uh, but they're, they're on schedule. They're not behind. So everything's.
Completed by November.
Right. Well, that includes the trail too. So it's three phases. The project isn't, everybody complains because they, they think it's too long. Well, it's not just Broadway. It was the adding of the turning lanes at, at, at Maple and also the trail system. So. There's a lot of different things going, a lot of wheels turning here at the same time. So, but yeah, they, they still are on schedule and they, they will come. They are, they've done really good about coming first meeting of the month.
If you have any questions, there's an online question submit, you can submit your questions to them and then that, that first meeting, they answer those questions at the first of the month.
They won't answer any questions other than what was sent to them prior to. So they have, they have a week or so to get their answers. So. It's a SR sixty-seven project at, uh, fortville.in.gov. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, I don't, I can't, I'm not gonna say that. I have, all I can tell you is, is I asked them if we were going to be driving on both sides and they said they felt like that would happen. So nothing is guaranteed here. Don't, don't, don't hang me if it doesn't happen. It's just, it just, it is the nature, but I probably, that probably will happen. It won't happen simultaneously with driving on both sides, probably. Um, there's still quite a bit that has to be done there at that intersection. So. Town Council comments. Ms. Libby?
I just want to say thanks for coming out and, um, it, when I first started my business, I came to the town council meetings and I learned a lot about the town. It doesn't mean that you'd get voted in. You don't have to worry about coming to be on this side of it.
You don't care.
The smartest person, but, um, you do learn a lot about the town and you can hear the factual information instead of what's out there on Facebook. So I loved having you guys here. So I hope you'll come back again.
Anyone else? I'm done.
I don't have any comments yet. Thank you.
I apologize for it being so hot in here tonight.
It's Joe's fault.
Joe's fault.
It's nobody's fault. That's all I got.
I had a, a quick comment for Chief Bratton. You mentioned about, uh, drones and cornfields. And if there are any more drones needed, you don't want Chinese drones such as DJI or Autel Robotics. Which have been found have components in them that would let the Chinese government look at the video feed that comes out of the drones. It's a cyber issue. So just wanted to put that out there. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know if any more are needed or if we already have any DJI or Autel.
We have none.
We don't have any drones, but we are currently looking. I've, I've looked at greenfields. I've looked at Fishers. I've looked at. A lot of different drones and their capabilities and I don't even know what brands they are, honestly. They bring them out, they show them to me, they fly them in the air and then show me the video and tell me everything they can do. And I'm like, that's pretty cool. And then me and the other cops go our separate ways and I'm like, well, if I ever get some money for that, I'm going to do that. So I haven't even really started the process to, to figure out where, what, how, any of that. I just know that there's licensing we got to worry about. There's other things we're going to have to look at. But then budget is my main concern now is just guys. So.
EMAC also has Chinese spy components. I, so the, the Department of Defense banned the Chinese drones and they, I think they've made a list of, uh, like approved. Non-Chinese drone companies. So, but if I find more information, I'll send it over.
Thank you.
Fritz?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I second.
All in favor? Pose? I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight twelve. All in favor? Thank you for coming. Loved having you guys. I wish you'd kind of.
Good luck with all that.
Yeah.